...two thousand and fifty, please come to order. The first item of business is the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Hey Joe, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item two is public comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak at this time? We'll close public participation, or public comment, I mean, and move on to approval of prior minutes. Any?
Yes.
Yes.
There were some errors in the recycling update. Which I believe were already amended. How was it?
Page three.
Three. There was some confusion, I guess, in, I don't know, I watched the tape and what it said, but I guess somehow in transposition it didn't get approved. There was, I guess, the mattresses. Used tires for the, oh, accepting used tires for free. You're not, tires are not free. It's like we tried even reinforced it after there's a charge based on the size of tire.
No, the charges, I think.
Right. It was just, you know, as I said, just a transposition error, but it is not correct to say that we're accepting used tires for free.
Where's that?
It's about three lines up from the bottom of the paragraph.
Used tires for free, right? It says three. Just as it's always been, nothing's changed, nothing's changed about tires.
And we're reviewing.
Okay, final. Anything else? Any other corrections? All in favor of the amendments corrected?
Aye.
opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Item four are the appointments for Lakeview on an authority marine patrol. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstained? Mayor's comments? I did want to tell you that the Women's Center sent a thank you with regard to the money and the budget for them, $2,000. The Women's Center, and more importantly, the adults and children will be able to continue serving this year, are grateful for this support, and this contribution makes working to end the violence the community-wide effort it must be. Thank you sincerely, Patricia Sackman, who's the president and CEO. So that was nice, we don't always get a thank you. And then, remember the prescription discount card program that we joined? So far, it saved $77,124 for residents of Milford. And that's that, three prescriptions card program. Mayor?
Yes. I know that it has occasionally been in the paper or on the front, the homepage of the town website, and these are available. But I just had somebody, I happened to overheard you mentioning how much of it we had saved, and they didn't know anything about it, which I think is, I'm just probably some people out there, so could we maybe put it back up on the homepage again, or somehow put it where somewhere about it?
In the original time, too, we mailed it, but we won't be ever so.
Right, they can come and pick them up here.
Yeah. They're usually in the hall, right outside Personnel Office.
Yeah, so I just, because I happened to be asked about it, I thought, well, thanks.
Now, is that seven, there's a quick question there. Seventy-seven, one-twenty-four since the inception of the program?
Yeah, yeah.
And how many years have you had it?
A year. A little, a year and two months, I think.
A year.
What, to kind of research how much that was cost. Now, some of the, some of the prescriptions for your dogs and cats can be moved, that program. Yes.
I know there's some in the department that's moved later now as well, as a matter of fact, and then you put that through, so it's just a bit like, maybe you talk with me from the senior side.
Exactly, that's right. And Social Services, she doesn't know.
They've got these cards right here in the.
Yeah, they're right in the front hall. Outside Personnel. We could, yes. We usually have a stack, everywhere we have stacks of stuff, so we'll just check and see if they still have any. But, no, it's really. My side is not here tonight. No, it's just not there. So I was going to give you guys an update on some of the ongoing programs, but I'll wait and see how late it gets, and then I'll do it then, see them up this way. So, if you don't mind, we'll move on to item six, which is Personnel Executive Session, which will review some of the updates on selected bargaining negotiations for Milford Library Supervisors Local 818, Councilor of Asme, AFL-CIO, and the International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local Union 677, that motion.
So, I'd like to invite in our attorney, Ken Taylor, and our personnel director, Al Chee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Support.
Abstained? From executive session, where no motions were made or votes taken. And we will now move on to item seven, which is an open session with regard to personnel. Could I have a motion?
Make the motion to approve the Milford Library Supervisor Local 818, Councilor of Asme, AFL-CIO contract.
Any further discussion?
It's a discussed executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Make the motion to approve the International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local 677 contract as per discussion.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you very much. Moving on to item eight. Hi, Mr. Brooks. So, we have anyone here from PD?
No. No, it's just an update.
Yeah, it was just an update. That would be the PD. Okay, so we'll move on to finance.
I don't think it's in water, man.
I'll put that up on the show at the same time.
I thought it was Thursday, first of July.
Thank you.
That motion should be included in motion to authorize the mayor to make sure the contract.
Okay.
Just a simple modification.
All right.
With the Teamsters and the AFL-CIO.
I'm not, I'm not, two motions.
And the second, are you agree with the, out of language that, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract? Thank you. Finance, hasn't, finance, any of you mistake, update? Because it is the only meeting in the month, so I guess he's not here, but you guys are.
Give a UNIS update.
There you go.
Well, July 1st, we went live with UNIS.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we've been live eight days, and subsequent to going live, we set up a hot line and a war room, and so it was, and frankly, in eight days, honestly, if I got 12 calls, that was a lot. So either A, they're totally perplexed, or B, we did a fantastic job. I like to think it was the latter of the two. The nature of the questions that we're fielding are those that we would have expected, like, I need access to this account, or, you know, how do you, I can't get to the detail, how to, you know, a how-to question, but from all accounts, everybody, mostly everybody has picked up on this and are doing well. We had a first check run, we ran POs, we ran quite a few POs, and there was nothing, nothing that came up where we hit a brick wall. So I consider it a good success.
Okay.
First off, that is so happy that it's best to be had online. So, thank you guys for all the efforts, it's really been a long journey of life, six, five, and one. But because we all were so excited about this, when can we see some reports? Because we're all very excited to see the new reporting system and what we can see from this.
Perhaps the next meeting, when great business financial update, run a year-to-date budget report.
Yeah, you gotta get some numbers.
Yeah.
Sure, I think we could just get a sample of what to, I think we're just all so excited about it, it would be nice to see what we have.
I'll be sure to tell everybody you volunteered.
But again, thank you.
Well, that's a report you're gonna have to use from now on. The account structure is different, as you would expect. We had to conform to the state's uniform chart of accounts and ASME 34 reporting, so, and also UNIS speak, so it was, it was quite an undertaking. It's gonna take some getting used to, on everybody's part. But most reports I'm getting, like I said, have been positive. I'm not saying there aren't any detractors, but, you know, nothing's come across my desk which would, you know, would leave me to believe anything to the contrary, that people were not getting it. Frankly, I don't want to put words in Hendrick's mouth, but he, he said that in his experience that this was probably the most seamless conversion he's ever done apart.
Yeah, it was, I, I expected many more calls, I expected a few glitches on some of the things, maybe check run or POs, and they just, it was really nice.
So the decision really to hold off a year, I think, was a really good business decision. I think we would have had quite a few problems having gone live July 1 of last year, so we did the right thing.
The second part is, does everyone have the technology they need to fully utilize the product? Or do you see anything, any barriers coming across our way that we need to really start thinking about?
Not at this point, for what we're, you know, using software for, we're doing everything from scanning attachments to, you know, being, everybody can print out their own reports on their printers and.
Are there any performance issues or anything like that?
No.
Then we don't have HR and Personnel in that account, right?
The bandwidth wise, software wise, you have, we can do.
Yeah, right now, we're doing well.
Okay.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Great news to hear, Councilwoman Alder said, congratulations. My question is kind of piggybacking on HR and Personnel, how are the next two units or whatever you wanna call them into the system, is there a timeline for those two?
Yes, July 1, January 1.
And you feel confident you'd be able to hit that in January? Have you seen any impediments to not happen?
It's in its infancy. What we did so far on this project is we had a great volume of information that we had to provide UNIS, and frankly, this week, representative, the implementer for the payroll and HR module, we're meeting with her all week, so we're gonna be discussing a lot of technical issues, a lot of policy issues, but as of now, I guess it's premature, I mean, but I see no reason, I said this before, I can't eat my words, but I see no reason at this point to be concerned.
So you're hitting the timeline marks that you're, that you're doing.
Yeah, it's, okay, this is the beginning of the process, so, and we, again, Tyler Technologies, they're building all of the modules for us, so that's, that's gonna be a great time saver.
Thank you, Mayor.
Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. Want to congratulate you all on putting this live and getting this done, you know, this has been a long time coming. We've been talking about this for many years, I think that's originally the idea, when we found out years ago, we had our IT transformation group together, that you guys were literally working, this is what sort of public understand, you were working 1980 software, thereabouts, Greenscreens, you know, literally like, you know, ancient Sanskrit in comparison to what we're running now. So it's very pleasing to see that everybody is getting this program, I mean, it's gotta be a lot easier to understand the newer technology than it was for anybody new coming in, trying to learn the old technology in those departments, so it's, it's better, you know, this is great news for everybody. I understand Personnel and HR are next, are there any other modules that go with this software that would benefit the town that either we have purchased, or haven't even thought about implementing, or something that we can add to this?
Once we start utilizing that, that question would best answer in the future, because we've got to see how everything shakes out, and something may come to light, say, hey, you know, we, you know, this would be a benefit. I know they have some kind of, I think they have permits and licensing modules.
Yeah, we've already, we're established.
We are.
Right, you already have that.
Yeah, the, the next thing I see coming, once all the dust really settles, will be possible point of sale for things, because right now, we're doing cash receipt stuff, and everybody's gotta put things in line by line of the police department.
Cash registers.
Cycle sign, organized, something like that, we have a point of sale of the property in the system.
Do you offer cash registers, where as you enter, as you accept cash?
Right.
It records, yeah.
And then making the posts. You're keying in.
Right.
That's great. I, I look forward to the updates and definitely the reporting capabilities, I think it's really gonna help us.
Oh, yeah, let's see, at some point, at some point, I'd like to provide demonstration.
It'd be great.
But let us, but let us, yeah, we're kind of flat out, so.
Great job. How are you? Thank you.
Thank you. Katie? Question, I know you said that from your perspective, you didn't get a lot of calls, and, but I'm just curious, and I depend, it's probably calls to you, but just have you gone from department to department, because a lot of times you said that option B is that people are just sitting there, like a deer in the headlights, to see that they really are grasping and using, so that you don't find out six weeks from now that they haven't done a lot of stuff, because they could.
Well, a lot, a lot of things flow through the finance office.
So you wouldn't know.
Yeah, I asked, did you get stuff from the PD, did you get cash receipts?
Good, 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 there you go.
Did you get requisitions? Yeah, no, I follow up on that, and I think every department's been represented so far.
Great. And you mentioned that Tyler was doing, you know, setting up the modules, is that part of the original contract, is that the core or under the?
No, that's the, the money that I came back to.
The add-on.
Yes.
But it's money that we already, you know, so it's not even.
Yes, yes.
My last question, Hendrick, is for you. Are you, when you mentioned the point of sale, because I'm a recycling subcommittee, we discussed this, are you saying that you need to have what is already in place, plus the payroll and HR up and running, before you can start to consider the point of sale option?
I wouldn't say, no, you don't absolutely have to have that done before you consider it, but.
Okay, well, give me a timeline, give me something, because we're talking about it in the subcommittee, and you have not considered that we're talking, you know, you're talking about January to start with the, the next steps, so we're not thinking that far out is what we need to be looking at, because this is a need that's now. So do you think, Hendrick, that that's how you have to do it, you're gonna have to have all of UNIS working before you can bring that in, or can the fiber optics that you're working with help to put a point of sale down there?
It, it could help, and, I mean, UNIS has a capability, we, we don't.
Doesn't, doesn't mean you would want to use it, it just has it.
It, it has a capability, we don't have that module, the point of sale, because.
And would you compare other ways to do that, since that's a very specific type of function, and not used across all departments, would you consider, you know, another option, you know, another point of sale?
Possibly, yeah.
If you stand on program or something?
Yeah, I would, I would look into it to compare prices, to make sure that, you know.
So you think we're looking at, like, a year from now? If you start in January?
I would say.
We're in July.
Maybe by springtime start really, you know, considering it, deeply looking into it, to see what to get.
Okay, so like a year from now? Okay, thanks. Thank you, Beth.
I'm just gonna piggyback. So on the point of sale thing, are there products that sit on top of, that can interface directly with the UNIS software, that we aren't tied to just higher? Do they have?
I'm gonna say most likely, yes, or it's going to kick out a file that could be imported in.
Correct, and that's what you're gonna do this.
And that's what, yeah, we're going with.
Okay, that's, I wanna make sure we're looking at all options like that.
Yeah, yep, to see, you know, what kind of point of sale softwares are out there, and what interface would be in this, what their prices are for their devices.
And what their user experience is like, too, because sometimes the products that sit on top are a little nicer than just those that come.
Yeah, and that is an advantage to, to UNIS's thing, because they go straight in, and then you don't have to worry about getting a file, making sure it uploads, there's extra steps in there that can cause errors.
And would you, currently, now, would you ask about that now, so we don't have to start from the beginning, since you're dealing with modules now, can you throw that into your discussion and see?
Yeah, I have talked to them on some more calls already.
Actually, because I know you talked about this, I would thank you. And at the Friday morning meeting, just so you know, the representative from Tyler did indicate that she thought the timeline of the first of January was achievable, so as long as, and of course, now that they're working, they're working with people who are a lot more familiar with the UNIS way and program, and that program manager is a lot more program manager. Right, but the subcommittee that we're on, you know, we're not involved in that, and I'm just saying that we were not thinking in terms of a year from now, because there are many point of sale stand-alone programs that could work. And I'm talking Personnel and HR, January 1, that. Right, right. Going back to the question earlier, did we think January 1st was achievable, and I wanted you to know that I did sit in on the meeting where they did think that.
But that's a good benchmark to move on, on anything you would obviously, might have to think of it in that.
Frank?
Yeah. Looking at that point of sale, if you look at it in the spring, it's two years on, because we have the budget for it. So if that's something that we're going to implement, we need to look at it in this year's, this upcoming year's budget, because if we wait till the spring, we won't have appropriated the money, so. So we really, we really need you to look at this earlier, because if it's something that you think is beneficial to the town, let's implement it in the upcoming year.
Right.
Any other questions for these guys?
Good job, Senator.
Thanks, guys.
Very good, thank you, nice job. Okay, so we will move to the Health Department.
This is a request to review and approve the Health Services Agreement with Washington. It's, we've been doing it now, we're, you know, I can't really, I don't look back since 1997, have been doing the agreement, redoing it every two years, so everything in this is the same, Tony Mancini has looked at it and said, okay, so if you don't think it's different are the dates and the numbers.
Pete?
I can make a motion to approve the renewed Health Services Agreement for the town of Washington.
Second.
And allow the mayor to execute, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, Tree Warden. Discussion of Possible Action on Creation of Hazardous Trees Ordinance. This one would have a little bit more oomph to it, and this has been reviewed by Mike and our warden and town attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, I have a few questions.
Do we have a motion with regards, if, so we can discuss it?
I can make it. I'd like to make a motion to establish creation of a hazardous tree ordinance.
And do you have the, do you have the statute numbers or anything on it? We'll do that in a minute.
So my, my first question is, this is just pertaining to a tree, a dentary or tree limit, that would harm a public highway or a sidewalk?
Right, within falling distance of the right way typically, I, I can't, I can't say that, I couldn't imagine any circumstances where it wouldn't be a tree that perhaps was over a playground, or, you know, some other town property, but typically, yes, we're talking about trees that are within falling distance of a, of a right way.
My next question is concerning the ad hoc appeals board. How would that, how would that work? Who would be on it?
Well, I think the membership would be determined by the mayor, in different parties that could hear a property owner's objection. Not to avoid the question, but I think it's fairly unlikely, if we get that far, I suppose it's certainly possible, but I think that the intent of this will make a property owner who's not otherwise aware of a serious liability very liable, and, you know, we're, we're not looking to do something here against a property owner's interest. And I think any reasonable person of sound mind would recognize that to fight having, either taking responsibility themselves, or allowing the town to take responsibility for them, would just be almost incomprehensible.
You know, Carlos, the council hasn't had the advantage of hearing about the ash cores or any of that other perfect storm scenario that you presented to me, so would you mind giving them a little background as to how come you ended up here?
Yeah, I know these meetings have been a little long, so I'll try to keep it kind of short, but the mayor is referring to an insect pest, an invasive insect pest, which is here from Eastern Asia. Milford has been strangely not subjected to this pest that towns around us have, have had it. It is now in Milford, and it was just a matter of time anyway, that was a sort of curfew area. In any event, that raised the issue here, and some other things, and specific circumstances that we got into and were trying to deal with, really raised the issue that we did not have what many municipalities do, and that is an ordinance which gives us this opportunity to protect the public. If it's a region situation, it really feels so, you know, it's just a matter of time, and certainly every tree falls down, but that's the issue of the Emerald Ash Core, we are going to experience a significant die-off of ash trees in Milford County, and many of those trees are on the town's rights of way, and property, we are going to be responsible for it, and we need that obligation, we're going to work with the mayor and the public works to try and determine the most effective, efficient ways to do that, but it's gonna be a big deal in the next, in the coming years. Undoubtedly with that, there's going to be many trees that are killed by this, this pest, and are going to really pose some serious threats to our workers and to people traveling towards us, and so I felt this is really a time. And so I felt this is really a time we've got. And there's other invasive pests that are on the horizon, you've probably heard of the Asian almond here, which is another one that has devastated some communities. I'm hoping that it gets here, but I suppose it could. So this isn't specifically geared towards Emerald Ash Core, but that's sort of the perfect storm scenario where we're really looking at a lot of big older sugar maples that were planted eighty, hundred years ago, and they have really come to the end of their lifespan, they've been impacted by some of the adversities of roadside conditions, where the salt flow of action and so forth. And so they are dying. And those trees, I mean, we're talking about trees that you couldn't get our hands around, and when they come down, they can kill people. You may all remember that back in, it was two thousand, Brookfield had an issue with a tree that came down and killed a woman and seriously injured kids that went on a new mansion drive. So there is this issue out there. I think this ordinance, although I don't see this a common situation, I think that, you know, really a lot of my way of working with property owners, if I see something that they may not be aware of or fully understand, I try to, you know, really attempt to bring to make them aware of that. I just feel as though there's one or two unique situations that we may get into, absentee landowner, you know, some, there's certain scenarios where people are not taking responsibility. And of course, the Emerald Ash Core is going to perhaps increase those situations. I think we want to be ahead of the curve, if you will, and I think this puts us in a good place to deal with those few, albeit few, but important scenarios where we want to make sure that we're not allowing a dangerous condition to persist.
So the process to be, is landowner A, you go to, you go to the tree as the one, right? And you deem the tree as a the issue because it's gonna fall on a public, public property. So if you could take me through what the next process is gonna be, you're gonna talk to the homeowner, and then what happens?
Right, so a fairly common scenario would be an inquiry from a property owner who has a dead tree and says, I think it's a town tree, and I come out and look at it, and sure enough, it's dead or dying or structurally deficient in some way, and I'll do research on where the right of way extends to. And that can be a little bit difficult in some cases, in many cases. In some of those cases, I'll get back to the property owner and say, our records show that this is not a private tree and has such as your responsibility. And as uncomfortable as it is, I need to let people know, as a licensed arborist and as your tree warden, that, hey, this is a tree that's dangerous, you acknowledge it, I'm here, we're looking at it together. I'm urging you to, you know, take appropriate action against it. And address this, because you're right, it could fall on a school bus, it could fall on you, it could fall on the kids. And so in the vast majority of cases, we work through that. There are some times where there's issues about survey, is it a town tree, isn't it, and so forth. But in the vast majority of cases, we work through that, and property owners are responsible, they recognize, hey, this isn't something that I want on my conscience, and they take care of it, or we take care of it, it is in fact available. But there's those one or two, you know, where you do get either somebody who's unresponsive, unable financially, which is a difficult situation, you know, and I'm sympathetic to that, but as a property owner, there are responsibilities that come with that. So if it did come to it, I think it's important that the town have a mechanism to address it. Something so egregious that you just can't go to sleep feeling good about, just, okay, well, you're not gonna take care of it, forget it.
So you have landowner A that can't afford it, or bank owner property. So you can't, you can't get a hold of the person that owns the property, let's just say.
Right.
So what is the mechanism then for, I see your department fellow workers would come and take down the tree?
Right, what we would end up doing is in effect doing the work, addressing the hazard and leaving the property.
Lean would be part of the.
Yeah.
And then I'm saying here that that's an eight percent yield? Where did you come up with eight percent?
I didn't, I didn't. That's consistent with the right of.
That's a nice.
While you're on, may I interrupt? And that statutory, that's fine, that eight percent interest rate?
No, it's not statutory, it's by ordinance. Statute authorizes the charging of interest, but it doesn't prescribe a rate.
No rate here instead of that.
No, no.
What's your rate on a judgment?
Ten percent.
About ten percent.
So then the property is lean. Does the, I see here that the owner of the tree has an opportunity to appeal. So is it, what's the amount of time that they have to appeal or?
I think it's, I think it's about, yeah, three days.
Are there appeals boards?
Right, so the reason I'm asking is, what happens if it's a tree that you deem that's just, this thing could fall tomorrow and kill somebody, is that, is that now waived?
There's a provision in it, there's a provision in this ordinance, and the, the tree warden, the discretion determines that it's an immediate imminent risk, that with the advice and the consent, both of those things, of the chief of police and the mayor, you can order it taken down immediately.
Two together or?
And, and advice and consent of both the mayor and the chief of police. The reason you do that is because there's a check and a balance of different requirements. And, and we don't want tree wardens to be alone on the situation like that. That's where that came from.
So my, the question would be, is you feel comfortable with two people that have no other experience? Okay, taking down an emergency, so that's.
An emergency, absolutely. Let me give you a scenario of this. Is there's a, there's a huge leader, a tree limb, a huge tree limb was hanging and it was broken. It was actually broken. And the tree warden in that town ordered, taken, ordered immediately, taken off the homeowner, claimed the homeowner, nothing came over. Here, instead of a tree ward, and that was a broken limb, and that was gone. And in order, just to insulate the tree warden, we have two levels of authority. That the highest, the reason I use that is the highest ranking civil officer and the highest ranking police officer in the town assisting the warden. So once that decision is made, it's very difficult to second guess his decision, because you have the police officer and the civil officer. That's why that's, and again, hey, they have.
And I too, I think it would be helpful if you, I was shocked that the broad powers that the state of Connecticut gives to a tree warden.
Yes.
I mean, it was really a broad.
It's not short, but I'm gonna tell you, I believe it's a lot. Carlos and the mayor and I talked about this. Under the, under the tree warden statute, the state statute, the tree warden has some broad power to take that, to order trees taken down. This is a little different, because it authorizes the entry on private property to abate a public hazard. Under state law, that makes a gap. So what I did is I took a look at the United legislation of general municipalities. There's a statute, and that's nine dash one, one, I'm sorry, seven dash one forty-eight C seven E. And that statute says that if there is a nuisance, municipal nuisance is declared, then this action is taken. So what I did is I drafted the ordinance to state that, to define this as a nuisance, if the tree warden determines it's a nuisance. Because he has the broad discretion to do that, he has the training and experience and know how to do it. And if it creates a nuisance, then it evokes that right to abate a private nuisance, a public nuisance based upon private property. That's why I drafted this one.
And in so doing, then the tree warden has the ability to go on some of the private property that way?
I believe it does, yes, there's an absolute imminent risk department, just like a police officer does. Clear and present danger, those are the, or in this case, a clear and present hazard. And, I mean, that's a sworn officer. And that's why we, in that instance, we have the mayor and the chief of police, all three of them acting as that, as that checking down. That's why I drafted that one. And there's certainly a continuum of risk, you know? There are situations where a tree that appears to be healthy comes down, even on a day when the wind's not blowing. You know, I've seen that happen, and you probably have too. Then you get into what we're talking about with dead trees that perhaps have been dead for a while. Homeowner might not know about it, a large piece of property, I haven't been made aware of it, somebody calls me and says, ah, it's on a dead tree. I go out, that tree, yeah, it could come down that night, but it's been there for a while. There's nothing that tells me in my experience that it's significant, you know, imminent risk, such as the tree broke off in the wind last night. It's just hanging on by a thread another tree, it's over traveled roadway. That to me is something that I'm gonna take pictures of, I'm gonna do everything I can to make the property owner aware. And if we can't, you know, get them to take care of it, I don't get a promise that that's coming down today. Yeah, I think that's something that we would move on.
Thank you.
Joe?
The one problem I have, which is, I have every time this issue comes up in town, that these ordinances are these penalty clauses. And here it's two hundred fifty dollars per day plus eight percent interest. And I think that's excessive, particularly when you have clauses in here where it allows the town to go in and take it down, and you have to pay a cost associated with taking it down, whether it's a subcontract or the town, those costs are easy. So it's, in my opinion, one or the other. If people aren't gonna take these, and I'm not talking about the imminent risk situation. I'm talking about if you get past the eleventh day, the warden may order the town highway department or the public works to take it down. What if the public works does not take it down for, you know, because they're busy, ten days? You get twenty-five hundred and plus eight percent interest.
We have said, Joe.
When, when in fact, you know, I think it's fair to charge someone, if we have to come in and take it down. Absolutely, and you're gonna pay for it, whatever that cost is. But every time we do these penalty clauses, we tried to do it in other areas, building departments and so on. I think I got in the way of an ordinance once before on current homeowners. You know, if you take a tree down in a right of way and it's a town tree, you could get trouble damages for it. Little I know, I planted a, you know, maple on it on right of way, and I can't take my own maple down. If we allowed that ordinance to go through, so it's a small, it's a cherry actually. I have a problem with that clause, that penalty clause, at that rate, and that's just a random number, I suspect.
That's to try and motivate them to do it quickly. If they go ahead and pay attention to the tree warden's warning and take the tree down within the couple of days, then they're not gonna pay that much.
But if, let's say we get twelve, let's just get four days extra, fifteen days out. So now you're earning a hundred, a hundred dollars in fines plus eight percent interest that's gonna be put on lean on your house, where, all right, we send the town out there, take it down, and we charge you for the cost of taking it down, it's simple. Why are we, I really have problems.
Because we're not a tree service. We have our own trees we're taking down.
Yeah, but we hire contractors to do this stuff all the time.
We have a contractor.
If this was something that could ramp it around town, I'm gonna assume we hired these outside contracts to do this work, because it's not the town's work, and we're gonna charge you to take it down. We can't have it both ways, I'm not gonna.
So you're looking at it either or?
Yeah.
Yeah, but in, in my world, we're not a tree service, and that's what that would do. I'm gonna accommodate you to take care of your own tree.
And we've put you on notice, you know, and we're gonna, eleven days in, we're gonna have that guy to come in and take it down.
I struggle a bit with that myself, and I'm not wed to that. I think that one of the issues that I have is the liability associated with letting it go any longer. I'm, I'm really, if I get to the point where, you know, we come to this situation and don't get cooperation from the property owner, I'm pretty much gonna be ready to pull the trigger as soon as that ten days is up. You know, I, it really is something that I would have a hard time walking away, letting something go. That got to this point, letting it go a couple more weeks in my mind would create a liability for the town.
That's, you put that order in, it's a matter of, there's a liability in switch, eleven days in, where you've ordered the highway department, or the public, I keep calling it, public works, you ordered them to take it down on eleventh day, we're fifteen days out, now there is a four day span where the town.
That's a good question.
It's open, that's why.
Once we make that determination, there's a new case law, and this is what, this is what we've talked about. We may own that tree. Once, once the tree warden, I'm talking about own responsibility for it. Once the tree warden makes that determination, the mayor said it before, the tree warden in Connecticut has vast power and recognition. So once, and the case that came down is, once the tree warden makes the determination, if the city decides, and it's in this with the city tree, and the city decides not to take it down, or it's going on its own leisure, because they're not in the budget, they're liable. Because that discretion's been removed, and it becomes a ministerial act. It's a similar thing here, Carlos and the mayor and I talked about this. The fact is, is once the determination is made, and that's how serious he takes it, or this tree warden takes it. Once that determination is made, we really own the responsibility. And by the way, that's a policy decision as far as defined, but that came from the town, that comes from the statute that's authorized.
There's no question, I knew it was a policy decision, that's probably why I question it so much. So, and that's, I knew the answer.
Yeah, that's why.
And, but I want people to understand, be clear. Then are we in an agreement with a private contracting service for removal of those trees after eleven days? Because we can't, and I'm sure it takes a lot to pull a team of people from DPW, you know, trucks and equipment and so on. It's not a one-person job, I'm sure it would involve several people. So we're in an agreement with a contract service to, if we go past eleven days, they pull it down, and then just charge someone for it. You know, it's, I honestly have talked about these municipalities, particularly when you're gonna lean people's property and the interest rate, eight percent's good, judgment, New York's not, so you're doing better here than that, if we are. And that's why I asked that.
So you're looking for either or?
That, I mean, that's my issue, you know, I, it's, I'm just, what's my opinion, I'll stop there. However, it's decided it is.
Beth?
All the same topics since you brought it up. The, if we get notice on the day one, and day four the tree comes down, are we liable if someone got killed or hurt?
No, no, we're not.
We're not.
Once, once, because you have to give this, this new process.
Correct.
Unless the tree warden has made a determination, there's an absolute imminent risk upon it, and request the chief and the mayor to join in that consent, and their consent. Then, if we don't do it, it's no longer a discretionary act, because the authority has made a determination, it's gotta come down. But we'll live with, I'd rather live with somebody claiming a civil rights violation for taking down their ash tree.
Absolutely.
Than a crush many of them, I mean, let me explain as I can.
But I'm more concerned that we have this ten day notice period, and there may be some that completely ignore you. Something happens in that ten day interim. Has there ever been a case where the town, because they knew about the issue, was held liable?
Absolutely, but the town did not take action that the tree warden told them to take.
Okay.
Not, well, not in the.
Right, I didn't mean it all for good.
Not at all. But the case that came down, the tree warden said the tree was gonna come down, and it was a budgetary issue, as I was gonna say.
Okay.
And that's, it's just no excuse.
Okay, then my other concern is, on the emergency situation, we have to give the mayor and the chief of police, but what if either or are unavailable, for whatever reason?
The deputy chief and the mayor.
But that doesn't say that here.
No, it doesn't, but however, well, it does actually, the deputy chief is by statute.
Okay.
And by ordinance, we have the chairman, the chairman of the town council. However, everything's electronic, so as long as the chief and the mayor are.
But God forbid she has stroke or they had, things happen. I'm just saying you're incapacitated.
Said something better, like you had Disney World.
Right, you're right.
Sure, and that's where you.
You're trucking the Antarctic, your phone doesn't work. Chairman of the town council. Can't travel. Like Air Force One or Air Force Two, you know?
So are there other instances of this type hazardous tree ordinance similar in other towns?
Not as good as this one. There are, there are.
I would say nothing less.
Let's say not as comprehensive as this one, because what we've done here is we've covered the imminent risk, we've covered the likely risk, and then we've covered the normal modes of violation and more. You could say it's the, it's the best one in the state of Connecticut.
Before he does, though, I just.
Somebody will definitely lift this.
Ask, why do we go from A to C on the last page?
Because I type this myself.
Just like, just feeling good, I thought I'd take a nap.
Yeah, what's happening, you guys taking good admin support at great rates?
Everybody's on vacation. Everybody. No, I do this stuff, a lot of this stuff myself.
Yeah, we're fixing this, I was using it with a pencil.
Notice this draft on here?
Katie? I have a lot of old trees, lots of road front, you know? And I understand how hard it is to have trees taken down, but I took an ash tree down before it got infected. Because it was tall enough that, after the cars, it's gonna hit the house. So I'm just curious, because I'm well aware about the Emerald Dash tree in here. How far back, you're the tree warden, we trust in you to notice. So you're looking at my property, and obviously it was by the road, anybody can see that tree, or maybe a sick tree. Well, how far back do you go? You do look at the height of trees and, and you take all of that into consideration. Okay, so you, you tell me, how are you notifying me? The three days, how do you notify me? Is it by registered mail, you call me and knock on my door?
Registered mail, or, um, you're talking about if we got to the, um.
Well, when you notice that one of my trees is on its way out, how are you gonna let me know to start the three-day clock?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna knock on your door first before we get to any of this. And, um, you know, say, I got a call from a neighbor who was concerned, the school bus was by here, and the tree, and it's going to be a problem, it's on the town's right of way, and as a, as a tree warden and as an arborist, I, you know, it's my duty to let you know if you don't already that this, you know, act is risky.
Good, and if I'm home and I find that I'm not, do you, do you register that or something? So what about the tree that's in the right of way, would you let me know you were gonna take it down? If it's in the, you would just show up and take it down?
No, no, and I, the only, the only way that, um, yes, in answer to your question, yes, anytime we do work on the, on the frontage, if somebody's talking, we can, we can discuss it at any time.
Okay, good. Now, I, I see that it says DPW, and I realize we use subcontractors because the height of trees that I've had taken down, there's, we don't only do that. So we have, we're doing subcontractors, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I understand what Joe was saying about the, the idea, it seems like sort of a real bashing of maybe an either or. So I'm just curious, if, um, that's property Vermont, and this is something that happened there. When the town tree warden deemed that something was a hazard, um, they had this, a deal with the subcontractor there, they would come and take it down. You said it had to come down, and I argued it for whatever reason, and you said, no, it's an imminent hazard. The contractor took it down, the contractor billed me. So the town didn't get involved in billing, and if I decided I wasn't gonna pay it, well, they sent the bill collectors after me.
Yeah, I think, I think the contractor would have a tough time collecting from you, uh, the property money because he doesn't have the contract, it's a questionable.
But you determined that it was a hazard, that, what I'm saying is up there, they don't have, the, the town never takes any trees down. They use a subcontractor, like a littlest people, they don't have the ability to do that.
And we, the trees that we're talking about, we would, we would, we might provide a front loader to, you know, get rid of the wood once it's down. All the work that we're talking about, on big, big trees, aerial work, it's a bucket of trucks, it's, it's a equipment we don't have.
So if you see dead branches, because you mentioned that right at the beginning, and you drive by and you see it, and it's hanging out over the street, you would just cut, would you come knock on the door and tell me you're gonna cut it, or you just cut it off?
Um, I, I, like I said, anytime we do work on somebody's frontage, I, I wanna make.
And you wait for a neighbor? Because I had a dead branch that's hanging up the street, and it's in the town right of way. I was kind of hoping somebody would come and take it away, because finally it fell down and I had to come and cut it off.
And, and bear in mind, we're, we're a rural community, the biggest town in Connecticut, so we're not talking about, you know, scouring every tree that's within falling distance of a roadway.
Right.
I think what we're really looking at here is, is those really egregious situations where, um, more likely than not, this tree is gonna end up
Oh, and I've seen them.
Coming across the roadway.
Would you, um, would you be amenable if, if homeowners called you to tell you that they thought they had, A, a sick tree? Because there are a lot of ash trees in our town, or something they think is in the right of way? Because we as homeowners are not any more sure than you are when you start to figure that line out.
Yeah, they do it all the time, always have to.
And how many people are in, in your office, in your area, besides you?
Well, I have a deputy tree warden in the town, and so we, we sort of tech, you know.
So it's a lot.
She's not licensed arborist, and, and I don't think has the same, I've been a licensed arborist for, for twenty-five years, and, and have really sort of focused on, um, tree risk and structural intent on trees, and been called as an expert witness in, in cases where people have heard. So this is sort of my forte, so if it's something along the lines of this ordinance, I would, I would not send her to deal with the property.
So we should encourage our, our friends and neighbors to be on the lookout, I mean, as a natural learner, I was in this whole program, to let everybody know about the Emerald Dash and the long reveal, but now that it's here.
It's not much you can do.
No, but we should let people know that they should look, I mean, most people who have it on the front, they have a bunch of trees, they would know they have an ash tree.
Yeah, yeah, and it's something I talk to people regularly about, I don't, you don't have a PR campaign per se, but it would come.
Right, but we, if this ordinance goes into effect, would you do something to let people know, A, about ordinance?
Sure, we could do a story in the suit to talk about the Emerald Dash for a long reveal, and how the D E P has all the little buckets trying to catch where they are.
No, I just meant to, to let people know that they should be aware and have, and speak about it with your neighbors because it's always better if you find that your favorite tree has to come down before somebody knocks on your door.
He has done really good work with regard to the neighbors, and I actually even got a letter from a woman over in Wellsville, talking about how good it was to work.
Oh, in my experience with the, the tree ward, the town, I mean, it's wonderful, I know.
They do try.
Vermont's not so hot, buddy. No, I just, a PR campaign to let people know, because as Joe pointed out, this is a very expensive, um, thing to go into, even if it's just four days, it, you know, it's a damn help.
You know what, though? If that kills somebody, it's gonna cost them.
Oh, oh, I'm not saying.
And, and one of the problems is to try and make people think it's serious. I mean, it is serious when you see a vehicle that's crushed by a part of a tree or.
My only thinking is that if you get to the point here where you're still arguing something that you've been told is in need of being removed, then perhaps the powers aren't gonna make it. But thank you for coming out for this ordinance.
Frank?
Randy, this, for public safety? I'm sorry, this, this ordinance is to protect the public safety, yeah. Then, I have a problem with the wording in C and D. I, I, I agree with Joe on the two hundred fifty dollars, because what it says in C, on the eleventh day, the town can charge two hundred fifty dollars a day. But if I'm rich, and I don't want that tree down, I'm paying two hundred fifty dollars a day, no big difference to me. And there's nothing in this ordinance that tells me I can't. It says in paragraph B, in the event the owner fails, but it doesn't give a date. In other words, there's, there's a missing.
There's a reason there's no date, there's a reason there's no date.
Okay, I'd like to know it.
Because the tree warden has to arrange to get this done, and usually, based upon our discussions, this is gonna occur post haste, while on your eleven-day period.
Because the way it stands now, it looks like the town, it says, it's a hazard, but it's okay, we'll charge you two hundred fifty dollars a day.
Now, that two fifty a day is designed to give an incentive to people to get it done, and not say, well, the town's gonna pay for it anyway, and then I'm just leaving it wrapped. That's what that's for, that's to avoid, as the mayor said, the town being a tree service.
Just, again.
But you're right, I mean, if somebody says that.
I agree with, I, I agree with Joe, the idea is to get rid of the hazard.
Right.
We just oughta, just oughta say, you got, you got five days or ten days, if it's not down, the town will contract to get it up, pure. You don't have to worry about the fine, it just gets done.
And you.
And you, and you will pay for it.
Right.
And, and just so you all know, um, if we get to this point, A, as I said earlier, it's, it's gonna be a rare situation, but the, I am an ordinance on the first day, probably even before, to give them the day, paper letters going out, as soon as we get a return receipt, I want that thing down the next day. Because this is something where if we let it go for, you know, a week, uh, I don't wanna be sitting in, you know, as a witness in a, in a case where somebody says, you know, this child was killed, you knew it was dangerous, you were charging two hundred fifty dollars a day, but, but yet you did nothing, and you had the resources at hand to do something. So just for your, um, you know, peace of mind, so that you know, I actually do foresee and have made arrangements to get this done on the eleventh day. Something that, that rises to this level deserves to get addressed on the eleventh day.
So it's not gonna happen?
So Randy, is it, you're hearing what we're saying, is there a remedy to this, that we can, we can get around this?
I don't understand what you're.
Well, the idea is that if, if it's a hazard, there, it should be a minimum time that they have to make arrangements to get it on their own. If they don't do that, forget the two fifty, we're going in and we're taking the tree down.
I, I would hesitate, I would hesitate to do that based upon the discussions we've had, because that's gonna be another timeframe, and that's gonna be something else that gives an additional deadline, if you will.
But you don't have any timeline in here now.
Yeah, it does.
No.
They don't, they don't take that tree down the eleventh day, you start getting.
Oh, no, it says, they start to form, but there's no, there's no timeline in how long that will go. I'll pay the two hundred fifty dollars for a month.
But what he, but what he just expressed is, he's got.
The tree warden's gonna do it.
The, the tree warden, on the day he knows that tree is bad, and he's sent down that, that notice, he's already, I know this guy long enough, he's gonna be on the phone with that tree service, and on that, on the twelfth day, that tree is coming down at eight o'clock in the morning.
So there's not gonna be a two hundred fifty dollar fine. You're gonna take it down on the, on the twelfth day, then you don't need the two hundred fifty dollars.
I know this sounds a little bit bizarre, but the only, the only scenario where I could, I could actually foresee this, um, really becoming an issue, if we get there with a hurricane, you know, and you have, really, you know, hundreds of these situations around town. Uh, you know, devastation, something that we haven't seen in decades. I, I can see a situation where somebody would say, well, you know, what the hell, I'll just let the town take care of it whenever they want to. And, and we will have limited resources, and we will be dealing with a triage, obviously, not unintended. You know, that, that could be.
Well, that wouldn't be fair to the homeowner, if he's getting charged two hundred fifty dollars a day, and he couldn't get a tree serviced if he wanted to because they're all busy.
Right.
That's not fair to the homeowner, I'm trying to get it done, I can't get anybody to come on and do it because they're all busy taking down trees somewhere else.
Then he would have a conversation with the tree warden.
There's gonna be some sort of discretion.
But it's not, in the ordinance, there's no discretion. It's two hundred fifty dollars after eleven day, end of story.
Well, don't forget, this doesn't, nothing starts here, nothing starts.
Unless he gives you a letter.
Until the, you're right, until the order is issued and a notice of violation, you're probably talking in a hurricane situation.
He's not gonna give you a letter in a hurricane.
He's not gonna issue a letter, because that would be sustained on appeal, in the, if there's a state of emergency. So the reality, so the reality is that nothing starts until the tree, that's what we talked about earlier, the power of the tree warden. Nothing starts until that notice of violation and order, uh, is issued.
Mary Jane? I agree with Joe too, I would like to see this removed for two hundred fifty dollars a day. I, I just think, when, take the tree down, no two hundred fifty dollars a day, it shouldn't even go out that far, if we're even looking at that. You know, if you've got an elderly couple that can barely pay their property taxes, and we all know what it costs to take a tree down, and you all look at a tree and say, oh, you see the dollar signs, you know, it could be thousands of dollars, two thousand dollars for a really large tree. For an elderly couple, I mean, that's huge, and how do we help people that need this, that have to pay for this? It's on your property, how are we gonna help elderly couples in this town? You know, come up with, um, you know, two thousand dollars or maybe three thousand dollars to have a tree taken down? And if they can't figure out where they're even gonna come up with the money, and then they're gonna start getting paid, uh, charged two hundred fifty dollars a day plus eight percent?
Well, I just think that's excessive.
The other thing too is, you don't have to be fine, they could say they don't have any money, and.
Okay, so let's hear about that, if they say, I don't have any money, then what do we do?
Yeah, I think we'd probably move to take the tree down and leave the property.
And then we'll lean the property.
Yeah. I don't know.
That's gonna be in every instance.
That stinks too, excuse me, but, you know, like, they're elderly couples, and they got a lien against somebody.
There's obligations, there's obligations associated with properties that are, are difficult.
Yeah, I totally get that, and I'm just.
I don't wanna have somebody say to me, you did this agenda down the street, I'm not taking this, you know, you take it down for me too, I'm strapped, you know? I gotta make.
Remember, that means it's not executed until the property is conveyed, so that elderly couple could sit up to the lien on that house for the next ten years, and they'll pass, and that, that.
It's a little possible.
Now, you come out and then you sell.
I don't want my citizens to run off, roll off on you, but I have people telling me, screw you, I'll wait until it falls down and you come out and close it up. And, and it is nice to have mechanisms to save people like that. No, this is, you know, not only is it your liability, and I'm memorializing our conversation in case I'm called as a witness in the case, but also there is an ordinance that, you know, does have some teeth to it, so you might wanna address this.
I, I would think.
There are those people. I don't, don't, don't misunderstand, I, I'm not, like I said, I'm not red for two hundred fifty dollars, I, I do think there's almost a, an either or aspect to that. As I said, the only thing that I could possibly think of where that might become an issue is, you know, in a hurricane, once you get out of the state of emergency and, you know, damaged trees, edible major ice storm, something we haven't seen in a long time, that's townwide, statewide, you know, six months later, a year later, you're still responding to situations that people have brought to your attention, and it could fall into this, um, scenario where, hey, this one's got, it's on private property, it's gotta be sold.
Well, it was only a few years ago when we did have that storm, that, it, on Halloween, where leaves were, the trees were filled with leaves, we were out of power for eighty-nine days, and there was devastation everywhere.
That's not the mother storm.
That's not the mother storm, and that, that was just what we experienced so far.
Right, right.
And I still see, I still see trees leaning the other way along the road, from that, from that storm.
If it's in your area, that's all devastation.
Right.
And we have trees lots along the road, and we can't, of course, get them all found.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Pete?
I, that was actually my question was, do you have a hurricane?
Beth?
I understand mine's about the two hundred fifty, and in your example, they had elderly couples, I understand frustration in their, their anxiety, but we also have town services that could help them. And I would say, in those instances, in the ten days prior to that eleventh day, they have the resources available to contact Carlos or contact the mayor's office to see if there's any help available, to see if there's any kind of social program that could maybe offer a discount to tree service, maybe they can help them.
Is there, if we're gonna put this through, we need to know, so we can tell people, is there something?
I think if they, if they, I mean, I'm just, I'm not, I don't wanna speak for you, but I know Carlos well enough to say that he would work with anyone, and if they're in that financial strain.
Very sympathetic to people that are, you know.
But if there's something out there, that's a lien, you know? Yeah, great. That's just wanna help it come down the street, or, you know, someday, somebody else might have this, so we do have to look at it from all aspects.
Sure. Yeah, but a lien on the property is not a devastating, is not a devastating event.
Well, it's not to you and it wouldn't be to me, but it might be to an elderly couple who's, you know.
True, but it's not, you're not, there's no, there's no penalty. Sure, but there's no penalty on, right, that, on it, it's a lien.
But my concern is too, if you take that two fifty out, then people could just say, well, just use the town tree service. And I don't want that to be overly burdensome on the town either, that they then have to take down multiple trees when a private service should really be doing the job.
And let's remember, this is for the egregious folks, the people who are, who are really, who, who are not reasonable.
Right.
We're not talking about the average person that's got a dead tree, we're talking about the, the most unreasonable of characters.
Right.
And we've seen them with light, with the light ordinance, we've known that has been effective, or it will becoming more effective, and every town has got one now, this is for the, this is for the guy that he just mentioned, go, you know, go fly a kite.
But it's also gonna affect other people, I mean, it's not gonna be just that person, unfortunately.
But there are cases of it.
Because there's gonna be elderly couples that say, we don't have any money to do this, and we can't do it, so we figure out what we can do. So I think we need to.
But they also have a responsibility as a homeowner, and we have a responsibility as a town to help them. So if they contact the town, I guess it's our responsibility to try and help them.
But what is a partnership? What are we gonna do at home, what are we gonna do?
Well, I would, we could take the tree down and lean the property, then there's no money out of pocket, and when the home eventually gets sold, that two thousand dollars will come off the top.
Come up the proceeds of sale.
Right.
They, they.
That, I don't have a problem. But I mean, listen, somebody, if there's an, in my, in my mind, knowing him enough, and, and just the way most people would be treated, if you went up to an elderly couple and said, listen, that tree is leaning over the road, it's gonna, it's gonna hit the tree, it's gonna hit the bus, they're gonna tell the him right on the spot, I don't have the money for that. So he's, doesn't eat, well, he maybe could have him sign some sort of waiver, all right, we're taking this tree down immediately, you don't have the money, this is, these are the terms, and we won't have to wait the eleven days to get to the two fifty a day.
Right.
Fine.
It's a conversation, and it's a agreement, this is the egregious.
This is for the worst case. This is for the worst case scenario.
So I had a couple other questions as well. The note at the top about it just being a hazard to those in public roads and sidewalks. Do you ever anticipate any situation? I mean, we have a ton of private roads as well where it is questionable whether it will go towards the public road or it'll go the other direction. Do you see anything difficult in stating this outright?
No, I think the tree warden needs to make that determination. You know, that's the discretion.
So you would, but he would still be able to go on the private road, private property?
No, not on the private road, only if it's public right of way, public highway.
But I live on a private road, but my tree's gonna fall on a public road.
Oh, sure.
That's what I mean.
Let me read you the statute that enables this. It says, among other things, it's a five-day statute that says, "The power, any municipality shall have the power to do any of the following." And it says, "Define, prohibit, and abate within the municipality all nuisances and causes thereof, and all things detrimental to the health, moral, safety, convenience, and welfare of its inhabitants, and cause the abatement of that nuisance at the expense of the owner or owners of the premises on which such nuisance exists." That is a big power. That's why he needs to make a determination. Before his step is successful, he needs to make a determination that this is eminently dangerous. If it's eminently dangerous, which creates a clear and present hazard, then it's defined as nuisance and a policy. So if he has to go on a private road to abate and relieve a nuisance that's gonna affect the public way, he'll go on a private road. That's how I read this, uh, this statute extremely well. And that's how it is.
And then my only other question, I was just discussing with the mayor. We do have a number of homeowners that aren't here for time. So in those situations, do you feel that the certified letter would get to them in time?
We're gonna look at the tax records to use on, you know, what mailing address we have and make our best effort. I can't say there won't be situations where someone's unresponsive through no fault of their own, but in my mind, if you own a property, you really should have some mechanism of being, you know, not at a fire. I mean, there's a lot of reasons.
What about the bank-owned properties? Does this mean a problem?
Um, I don't, yeah.
No, we don't see a problem with bank-owned properties. As a matter of fact, we should hammer that fact of that. Because they're gonna ignore the 11 days and you're not gonna hear a word for six months. You might as well just not take the tree down the R. He just didn't have a head. Yeah. They won't respond. They won't not respond.
But will, but the lien on the property is the counter.
Oh, yeah.
And if it's dangerous, he's gonna have it taken down.
Okay. Katie?
I think that what was mentioned already is an important thing to note here that we talk about it, there are elderly people there. I think that if they're people who've been here a long time or not, they're elderly, they more than anyone are gonna see the merit in removing something that has a danger to the public and could potentially be a liability to them. And I think that knowing, Mayor Jane, you know a lot of them too, that families still own property here. Many of them don't worry about things like liens, even taxes, because they figure, "Well, I'm gonna go and let somebody else worry about it." And I think that the lien is not an excellent way, but it's the best way to not impact the person who can't afford it at that point. I mean, at some point, if they have to sell their property, it would have to come up. But, you know, knowing, like you say, what it costs to take down trees. If you indicated a couple of trees that had come down, that's 54, $5,000 easily. And I think any of us would say that was too much. And partly because I feel that the lien is such a good instrument for that. I guess, and you made it clear that on that 11th day, you're really gonna pull the trigger anyway. I guess I don't see, I've been beaten into it now, but I think I don't see the reason for $250 either. I think that it's just insult to injury. If you're gonna do it, do it. And if you can lean the person, just lean. So that's my last question.
Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. Two points. Going Cannavale Lake Road north, I noticed, CLP or Everstore guys there a couple weeks ago, and they ridged a bunch of trees. Some of them are definitely not, are far enough back, but they definitely would impact the lines. The right for them to do that, where does that fall into this?
Well, they're, the statute changed for them. I haven't kept up with it since I was involved with that program. It used to be a permission situation for any trees that were private trees. So any trees, the branches of which, you know, came over into the public right of way, by rights, they need my approval to do that. For any takedowns, they know very well that any takedowns that they're doing, that either a property owner, a passerby, someone of just general interest would have an objection to. I wanna know about it before the chainsaw starts. So I wanna look at it with them. And my attitude is, I want you, Lou Street, you ask, whoever it is, to meet with the property owner. And if they are unreasonable and don't see the liability of this structurally unsound tree, I'll come out and try to work with them. But I don't like the idea that we're gonna, you know, act on their behalf. I think typically when you see trees that are ridged, they're trying to identify those trees who are property owner, who wasn't there when they were there. They may have spoken or corresponded and said, "We wanna take these trees down. We ridged the ones that weren't interested in taking them down." So far, they've done a lot of work in town and I've gotten involved in a lot of situations with them, working with property owners to try to make sure that there are no complaints to... And my understanding is there have not been any that have come to my attention.
Yeah, because there is a clear and imminent danger. It's clearly gonna take the line down, which is an imminent danger if it lands on the road. And 90% of the space is, they're on, they're coming over a down road.
Yeah.
So the trees got it down.
You know, Lou Street, guys, whoever it is, they probably use the same argument. I know they do, but they talk about liability. It's your tree. We're here, we can do it, you know? We'll lean up everything. It's not, doesn't cost anything. So I mean, I make a good sales pitch.
So my second question is gonna be more than a few grand. This lien, house is totally underwater. Where does this lien land? Is it like a tax lien, so we get paid first?
It's not.
It's not?
No.
Where? Like below a second mortgage?
Wherever it falls into recording.
So everybody understands, in certain cases, we may not get this money back. But obviously, the health and safety of our community is far more important than a couple thousand dollars to take down a tree. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood this isn't automatic.
Right.
You know, you get a lien on your house, so when the house sells or goes to probate, you're immediately gonna get the money. I mean, you could be at the bottom of a list of people.
It does not have taxes.
Right, it doesn't have taxes.
Okay.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, so what adjustments do you guys wanna make on this? Or do you not wanna have an ordinance at all? So why don't we talk about that?
I would like to ask that we have an opportunity to mull this over and not have to make a decision about the ordinance or what we wanna take in or out of it. We've already been talking about it a lot. We've done a lot of important things discussed. I would personally like to wait till the next meeting to, yeah, table it and discuss it then. There's a lot to think about here.
Well, it is pretty weighty. And I'm giving you guys time to go back to the budget, see what we usually budget for the tree removal we already did. If it's in danger of falling, you're gonna take it.
He's doing it anyway.
Frank?
I'll go along with Katie's, but I think Randy heard this discussion. There seems to be some consensus on the 250.
You have a legitimate determination, Frank.
Yeah, this is...
You have to have it.
You're the ones presenting it to us. You can take it back and change it.
No, no, Carlos and I are presenting it.
That's why that's in there. I didn't write this. I didn't say that.
Well, you said you wrote it.
No, I drafted it. But I'm not the one who decided.
No, I'm not the one who decided. The 250 is in the statute?
Yeah, it says, it says that any such provision like this can prescribe penalty for the violation of not to exceed $250.
Yeah, no, but the word can means that you don't have to have it.
Right, that's true, Frank. That's why we're discussing it.
Yeah, that's why you have to make a decision.
That's what I just said. I said, let Randy go back and take what we've been saying. We don't have to hammer it out once and for all.
Okay.
Let's table this. So I did nothing except change, see the beat and, you know.
That's right. Do nothing but that at this point.
You did a great job.
You have the vote on that?
You have the vote on that?
We will be tabled this discussion during next meeting.
Second.
All cases opposed, abstained.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you for the lively discussion. Okay, the next one up is economic development to discuss... Oh, I'm sorry.
I was wondering, you have the Chamber of Commerce sitting on all of this. Might we...
Okay.
It should be relatively...
Denise, would you mind coming on up to talk about the discussion and possible action on changing or the request for the date? It's item 13. And maybe give the council background on why we're changing those dates? And that gives you another plug for your...
So initially, when I came for you in March, I had asked for October 11th for the Harvest Festival for the road closure after some discussion. It appears that the Oktoberfest that Up and House puts together, she, Madhala Young, asked if we could change the date to October 4th. So I checked with Park and Rec to see if the green was available for that day. They said it would be, so here I am to request that the date be changed to the 4th from the 11th. And once that is decided, then I'll go to traffic authority as well.
So much.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Opposed? Stayed? Thank you. All right, Luigi. Is there anyone else who wanna put a little Luigi's? Anyone else, Frank?
I'll go by Icela.
Okay, this is, sorry, I couldn't resist. As you know, we have been mulling over the rewrite on the tax deferral ordinance. And in front of you on item 11 is a outline that goes along with some of the suggestions that this body gave to Luigi and that he spoke with Abby. And so here we are again.
Really, we had two discussions about this. The last discussion was really focused on the incentive amounts. Were they enough to entice someone to expand or come to town? We took in feedback from the council at that meeting. As you can see, at the higher end of the threshold, particularly products at 15 million or more, there was some discussion about a range that allowed the council some flexibility for both new capital investment and jobs. So the council could consider the overall impact of the project. And we did increase the lower levels based on some feedback from the Economic Development Commission. So that's really the only changes that we've made since from those first two meetings. Really, the eligible uses are still the same. We've just made those adjustments. So if anybody has any questions or additional comments?
Good.
Okay.
I looked at all of the different, once you provided those examples, they were great. And there was just one of the statements to the towns that I just liked, the sound of. So just wanted to throw that out there for everyone's consideration. And I'll just rephrase it to, I'm not ours. They had a similar threshold, but they also stated in all cases, "Town council shall set the abatement level and duration based upon qualifying factors established." And then they put in this, you know, like this.
You like that?
That just sounded nice, little qualifier. But let people know that there was opportunity to improve the town council and discuss.
Pete?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the hard work and reach on this. I like the fact that the 50 million plus goes to year seven. So that's good. And I also partly agree with Council and Elder that we implement that furbage into this.
Randy, did you?
No, I'm gonna need that one.
What town was that?
You know, I was just thinking, I think, for several reasons. One, because we wanted to try and present, although, an aggressive proposal, one that's responsible. But also because of state statute, that's why you look at the three years for under 3 million. And which allows us above 3 million to expand it to 5 or beyond. So that's, we'll just make this motion. Kenner?
I made the motion. I'd like to, I'd like this body to consider a proposal revisions to the tax deferral ordinance for commercial and industrial property as stated here with the amendment that Council and Elder is making with Urban Development.
Okay.
Okay, so as soon as Steve gets that number, you can place it at the beginning of the rest of this.
Make sure the grand's NID-47 standard offered. So we know what part you're talking about.
Just for discussion purposes, so the public understands this. Obviously, we've had a tax deferral ordinance for some years. We are sharpening that because the players out there, you know, are much larger than they were in years past. And for many people looking for jobs, you know, many people for these types of companies are going out of the area. We've seen the demographics here where so many people go from New Milford to Stanford, to Milford to Norwalks, to Milford to Hartford, to Milford to New York City. A lot of people that are coming here are coming from Corington down. So we're hoping to create incentives for higher paying jobs, which is what everybody is hoping for. Increase the wage list and to increase opportunities for assistance. So that people understand why we're doing this. This is not a corporate giveaway. Some people like to characterize as this is attracting businesses to our vibrant community and they get more by.
And what's the paragraph?
So as follows, "In all cases, the Milford County Council shall set the abatement level and duration based upon qualifying factors set forth here."
You don't have to listen to it, I'm just ready. Say that again?
I'll say it again.
Please.
"In all cases, the Milford County Council shall set the abatement level and duration based on the qualifying factors set forth here." I'm trying to say set forth in this ordinance.
Is that by extended?
Qualifying factors.
That's all I, that's all I...
Is this going before?
Yes.
Before then.
Yes.
So Randy, this basically allows the council, as it always has, the authority to change...
It expresses the implied.
Right.
So you already had the authority based upon statute or the ordinance. This actually tells people you have it.
On common, I will continue to stand on is that the overall statute, although I agree with debate, it's too narrowly tailored for the center of town. But on that, I will...
Hold on, it's our discretion.
So we'll need a public hearing set and the next meeting is August 10th, is it?
Yes, August 10th.
So all in favor of approving the ordinance as corrected and amended? Will I have to turn?
Aye.
I oppose, abstain, and I need a motion for...
Second.
In the E. Paul Martin Room.
Seven, 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 11:00?
Seven o'clock. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. I have two, I'm sorry.
I don't mean that.
What did I do? What did I do?
No, you just said, instead of approving the ordinance, what you're doing, you're approving sending it.
Sending it to the town.
Just a clarification, a reference to show that it's being sent to the town.
Yes, being sent to the town meeting in this format.
Public hearing, it's not a town meeting, public hearing.
Public hearing.
Followed by a town.
Sorry. Okay, item twelve is a request to designate forty-five thousand dollars from our year end, which we don't have a solid number yet with regard to surplus to be used for creation of a townwide strategic plan. On item twelve, I handed out a paragraph that we put together with regard to doing a strategic plan if the state has steep grant available that's coming up. And I thought it would be nice to share it with you because I think we should get started on it. They really haven't figured out what discretionary monies they're going to be handing out in Parker. But from my point of view, the strategic plan could take some of the plans we've already created and after a town with, like, our traffic plan, our board event strategic plan, our plan of conservation and development, our economic development plan, take some of the ongoing projects that we've already started, take some of the projects we're planning on doing, bike trails, the River Walk, the River Front Zone even, and then the properties that we have available, like, we're gonna have Central Brass coming up online, we still have Still Meadow, and maybe even help assist the community in discussions with regard to John Pettibone and how that fits into the overall plan for the future for the whole town. So, I thought it prudent to identify money to set aside from surplus, assuming we know what those monies are. And that way, we can be considering different consultants that we know can manage conversations with the public and input from other officials with regard to setting up a plan that can help identify. Because I don't think that everyone really knows all of the things that are going on throughout the town all the time, all the projects that are ongoing, and how they all complement or not each other. So, I think that might be a good opportunity for discussion too. And so, that's why I place this here. Katie?
I certainly agree that a strategic plan is needed and overdue. And I think that if there are facets of things going on in town that we feel or you feel that not everybody is aware of, then shame on us because that's what we're here for. Because we shouldn't be letting people know everything that goes on, whether they listen to it or not. One thing I would say though, and this is what many plans like this are being done in surrounding towns and across the country. I think it's important, rather than just saying, we're gonna take whatever that amount is, give or take, I would like to have more input, I'd like this council to have more input into what is done as far as who we go to. I think that it's been proven now that a new way of thinking about strategies in towns because it has to include marketing, it has to include economic development. It's not just a matter of what we already know we might have going on. And the town of Washington is an example. They've been interviewing firms to do this. And I really feel that this is not something that just because we have a lot going on and we should jump into. I would like to see the council have input with you as well as, you know, as you said, you know, like when we did the POCD, you know, the public input. But before you get to that point, I think having the right firm, and that doesn't mean that we know right now, remember my saying, you sometimes don't know enough to know what to ask. I don't think that we know right now who we would ask to even look at talking to us about this. And I think that takes some time, and I wanna see, in my mind, that we take the time to do that. Because this is an expensive process. We do have a little money now, that's wonderful. I just would like to see it spent wisely because this strategic plan will last probably beyond the time that many of us are still sitting and functioning in the municipality. And it's really important what we're gonna do here because it's gonna affect children and grandchildren. And I'd just like to see it done the right way. I think too many towns and cities have gone quickly to try to do something because we know it needs to be done. Let's take our time and let's involve a lot of people.
Thank you, Mary Jane.
Just, could you just go a little bit about the grant and what you said about it?
Oh, I said, steep grants no longer have a cycle anymore. It used to be you identified a specific month out of every single year, and that's when they would award steep grants, and then you would put in for requests for money and then you knew what was happening. Now, they don't know. There's no regular cycle when you're applying, that's what I was saying.
And so, we could get forty-five thousand, or?
You might be able to get that if we apply for a steep grant for that particular purpose. But I wouldn't be able to tell you when. That's the issue problem, because I don't know when. And it's not just this government. Depends on the state of the economy generally. And so, you know, this administration has been generous with the town in New Milford. But again, there's no way for me to say, so such is such a date, we have the money. So, Pete?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very excited that we're taking on this endeavor. I think it's much needed. I'm very excited that you decided to move forward with it. But I also agree with Councilwoman Francis that, you know, it's something I think we should take a look at, help develop it, and, you know, have a little more, instead of being so macro, maybe have a little more micro input into what we want as far as your base strategic plan. But I love the fact that we are moving forward with this endeavor. I think that's great. Thank you.
And with regard to costs, when I was requesting information from CCM, many communities didn't already have some of these other plans in place. So, the cost is, that's an impact too. Because they can already take, you look at the traffic plan that we had done or any of the other.
School demographic plans, all the point.
The demographics, all that kind of development. And so, we're pretty good with regard to baseline information. And then the input from the community, you know, having somebody else come in like we did for the POCD, that worked really well with exchange of ideas and information and.
Subgroups and dots and.
So, I think that, I think, and what I meant by somebody not knowing is, they may know, but they don't think about it every day because you don't have to know all those moving parts on your drive or in your. So, it gives everybody a good refresher on really all the stuff that's going on, so.
And we have no problem making that decision, if it was this or anything, with this whatever forty-five give or take.
Okay, I think that we're fine. And so did Ray, or I wouldn't have been able to get him to respond.
No, and there's no other allocation, since it wasn't the map required. There's no other place to put it because of how we ended up with it.
Right. Maybe Frank, sorry?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, strategic plan. But one of the problems that I get, I've seen a lot of this. You do the plan, and you get it bound, and it goes on a shelf, it's wonderful. But I would like to see a mechanism in the strategic plan that allows it to evolve. Because the strategic plan that's effective today might need to change tomorrow because, for instance, Pettibone just came up. And if that wasn't in the strategic plan, where does it fit? So, I don't know what the mechanism is. Maybe it's a review why the town council, maybe a sustaining committee of the strategic plan. So, items come up, that committee will be designated to fit it into the strategic plan. And I don't know how you do that. But I would like to see the working document, not just a thing that gets bound and put on a shelf.
That's a good idea, Frank. And we don't really have one.
A shelf? Oh, I imagine.
No, a shelf. But like I said, we have a lot of the other plans that work on specifics, and we really need to take a.
Yeah, the concept is wonderful. I just wanna make sure it's not.
Because by, by working document, I think you need also, we're gonna have to have a frank discussion with regard to the revenues that it takes to do a lot of these different things. And so, to include those in your plan, you have to have a financial plan next to it.
And that's what the companies that work on it say.
They will, yes, yes.
They know how to make it fluid and last generations.
How to work it into your budget, or is it something we're gonna go out and get a grant for? Is it something we're gonna do this? And, you know, timelines and, I'm looking at all my volunteers now. You've got time now.
I can happen to help.
So, I think it would be kind of fun, too.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Kind of, Pete?
Just one other thing too, to put you back in the council. And then, more of those statements, I also think not only do you make it a living document, but you also provide a hard time.
They should have.
So, you're not looking like.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to be. Approving designation of forty-five thousand dollars in fiscal year six thirty twenty fifteen surplus to be used for the creation of a townwide strategic.
I'll stick on that.
If something changes, I'll be ready. That was the general view we got with regard to trying to figure out all the functions and public participation and so. All in favor? All opposed? Abstain? Item fourteen is the youth agency, and we approved accepting the grant money, but I forgot to ask you to allow us to appropriate the funds. So. And that would be as in the agenda, instruct the director of finance to appropriate the funds necessary, which later will be reimbursed by the way. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Not going to executive session with a short update for pending litigation with regard to a possible settlement regarding, pending in the Superior Court and Connecticut appellate court, Catherine Fergus versus town in New Milford, docket number, as Brett. And inviting in town attorney. Okay, we're back from executive session, and no motions were made, no votes taken. We're moving on to item sixteen, pending litigation, discussion of possible action on the proposed settlement regarding Catherine Fergus versus town in New Milford. Sarah Moschino?
You are. I hear from you that we allow counsel on behalf of the town of New Milford to settle the matter regarding Ferguson versus town in New Milford as discussed within the Browners.
Well, if we allow Kermes.
Kermes, and counsel, Kermes and counsel. So, so.
Second.
As in agreement. Agreeing with their proposed settlement. Now, it's a reasonable. As discussed. Any other comments, discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Abstain? We don't have a second meeting in July, I'll see you in August tenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?